Excellent, excellent. Thank you for joining us. It is Wednesday, July 27th, and we are here at the Board of County Commissioners Equity Workshop. This is a virtual meeting of the Board and staff to address the equity projects that we've been working on for quite some time. So I'm very glad to call the meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call since we are virtual, although we're not voting on anything today. So we don't necessarily need an in-person quorum, but it's nice to recognize everyone that's here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Overman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White? Commissioner White? All right, thank you of a quorum.
Thank you. And we have received, I have, my office has received the, on a letter from Commissioner White indicating that he had a time conflict and would not be joining us this afternoon. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order and thank you all for being here. We've been somewhat doing a little of this work along the way as we learned what some of the issues that were found by our consultant, Dr. Mr. Lamont Brown from DEI Solutions, who's developed a study for us. He is present for answering questions today along with many of our staff members. And with that, I'm going to open it up and ask Ms. Wise to provide opening remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is really a great day to be doing this workshop as we had the ADA anniversary celebration in county center earlier today. So what a great segue. So I'd like to thank you for being here today. And today we're going to present at this workshop. This was requested by the Board, and this is to share our current activities and planned actions related to the seven recommendations made by MGT Consulting in their Community Equity Profile Report. That report was presented to you on April 6th earlier this year at a regular Board meeting. So this PowerPoint is briefly going to describe what is more detailed in our County Administrator Action Plan. It looks like this. This is included in your backup. And the action plan addresses each of the recommendations. It speaks to the current Hillsborough County activities being performed, and it also provides a discussion on some planned action steps that we plan to undertake. In addition to your backup, the MGT report is in your backup as well. It's quite lengthy, and it also is accompanied by an audio explanation that was provided to you back in April. I'd like to thank Lamont Brown with MGT for being here today. He's available also for any questions that you may have. There are a lot of people who participated in the creation of this action plan, including each and every department director. There was a liaison committee that was led by Brandon Wagner. It included Albert Coleman, Col Harnes, Cheryl Howell, Ramin Kuzak Kanani, Leana Lopez, Ivy Martin, and John Patrick. And in addition, I wanted to mention Beth Cardenas, Marissa Garcia, Sarah Wells, Ellie Rodriguez, Carmen Labou, and Hema Alvarez, who also did incredible work gathering the extensive county activities being performed. They researched data and helped to articulate the plan. And my extreme apologies if I failed to name someone specifically because truly there were so many who were instrumental because as we will discuss and as you all know, this is a team effort. So with that, if I could have you all put on the PowerPoint for me? And go to the next slide. So by way of background, just as a reminder, the Board directed the development of an equity profile on June 30th, 2020. MGT Consulting was selected to conduct the work by the Board on June 16th, 2021. And then from June to March, MGT Consulting coordinated with the community stakeholders, the public, the county, to collect data and solicit input necessary to develop their report. And that culminated in the presentation of their report on April 6th of this year. Next slide, please. And MGT offered three key findings and observations, and that was the backbone of their report and their recommendations. And you could see those findings here. First, current inequities are directly related to historic systematic oppression. Two, each of the pillars identified by the Board of County Commissioners impacts economic realities of citizens in tangible ways. And three, our community partners primarily express concerns regarding affordable housing and economic opportunity. Next slide, please. Sorry about that. A key focus areas of the report recommendations and our planned actions is to create an equity lens through which we as an organization think and act, especially related to the nine Board identified pillar areas. And you could see these nine pillar areas. They were identified in the RFP and that which was used as MGT formulated their plan to us. Next slide, please. Based on MGT's recommendations, a pro equity policy agenda should be premised on the areas that have disproportionately worse outcomes for specific marginalized demographic groups identified in the report. And these areas include jobs in economic development, criminal justice, the built environment, children and youth, health and human services, and the digital divide and transportation and mobility. Next slide, please. To recap, there were seven recommendations in the report, and that is what we are going to discuss today and what follows our action plan regarding each of those items. So we're going to discuss each one individually. And once again, a more detailed analysis and description is provided in the county administrators for review and action plan, which you have. So the first one that I am going to discuss is number one, to create an Office of Equity and Access. And then I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl Howell to go through numbers two and seven to discuss the various other recommendations. So number two, conduct a risk benefit analysis of instituting a disparity study. Three, establish apprenticeship programs in emergent and green technologies. Four, conduct a disproportionate minority impact study on criminal justice. Five, provide ongoing and comprehensive DEI training to all staff. Six, support enhancements in the public transportation system. And seven, enforce the regular use of an equity decision guide. I think I failed to mention number one, the one I'm going to discuss right now, is creating an Office of Equity and Access. Next slide, please. So now we move into each of the recommendations, our current activities of an organization, and our planned actions moving forward. And just if you could please keep in mind, these are initial steps forward. This is a journey toward achieving greater equity, and it's just that, it is a journey and one that we're going to do not alone, but together with others throughout the community, from our nonprofits to community organizations, partner agencies, and much, much more. Some of those parties were consulted during this process, but many still are to be heard and to be discussed with and coordinated with. So number one, recommendation one proposes to create an Office of Equity and Access. And today, the county has a team of dedicated community affairs liaisons who serve an important bridge to our diverse community. We have an equal opportunity administrator in Albert Coleman. The Board has two committees of volunteer citizens dedicated to giving greater voice and access to people, the Diversity Advisory Council, and the Commission on the Status of Women. The county has a highly successful minority and small business program, expanding and ensuring greater economic opportunity for qualified businesses, and that has evolved even that immensely over this past year. And a vibrant diversity, equity, and inclusion program through our human resources team. I know many of you see the various activities that are scheduled on an ongoing basis. So now, how do we build on this foundation and actually improve it? I've mentioned to each of you individually to, and shared my vision that I'm going to share with you all again today. I am establishing the position of Assistant County Administrator for Equity and Community Impact and naming Cheryl Howell to that post, which will report to Chief Financial Administrator Tom Fessler, who was also instrumental in the creation of this report. This allows for seamless interaction and coordination with the relevant areas, key areas of economic opportunity, MBE, affordable housing, human resources, and others. As we know, Cheryl is well-known by the Board and the broader community for her tremendous success as Director of Affordable Housing, for her innovative thinking, her open communication style, and her positive outlook. One of Cheryl's very big tasks will be to replace herself as Affordable Housing Director, who with Cheryl's guidance will be a part of these DE and I efforts. Next, I plan to establish an Office of Diversity and Equity and Inclusion, reporting to Ms. Howell, and merging the existing community liaison functions and teams into the new office. And Ms. Howell and the team will evaluate their existing resources and needs and determine the best structure in order to implement an effective work plan. There will be additional resources needed. It's, this is a big task, as I've shared with Cheryl. This is not her sole responsibility. This is all of our responsibility. And working together with our partners, with the community, together, we will go on this journey. And this I intend to do, to initiate this, actually initiate this even sooner than 45 days, and plan to establish those new positions. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Howell and turn the remaining presentation over to her.
Well, thank you very much, County Administrator Wise. I am hugely impressed with, with your choice, and I can't tell you how pleased I am to see that we will, we have an opportunity to be blessed with Cheryl's talent and have, see that this, this is moving forward. I know we've all wanted to see this progress made, and I'm really looking forward to Cheryl's leadership in it. Now, as, you know, the Chair of Affordable Housing, I'm like freaking out a little bit over here, but I'll get over that because I'm sure she'll be able to find an excellent person to help lead that team in that effort as well. So Ms. Howell, since you are next on the agenda, I don't see you yet. I don't see your camera yet, but it's, I'm sure you're there. And you're recognized to present the county's response to the Community Equity Profile Report recommendations.
Thank you, thank you. And if we could go to the next slide, please. Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Director. I just want to say first, I'd like to take a moment to thank the Board of County Commissioners and County Administrator Wise for, for your support and the effort in furthering diversity, equity, and inclusion for the county. The Board has already begun some great work in the area of affordable housing with the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as well as the small business and apprenticeship programs that have currently begun. And so with recommendation two, we're looking at conducting a risk benefit analysis of instituting a disparity study. And we'll be exploring the options and the risks regarding these studies that will help to guide us on our next steps. Now, we currently have three programs that have already begun in the county. We have the Minority Business Enterprise Program, the Small Business Enterprise Program, and the Small Business Development Center. And so with that being said, I just want to say that, you know, there are so many things that are going on in so many areas, and we're going to be highlighting just, just a little bit of those today as we go through this presentation. Next slide, please. Now, recommendation number three is to establish a program in the emergent and green technologies. Now, we're, we're planning to coordinate with our internal and external stakeholders that focus on exploring new and potential programs, including those in green and emergent technologies, and to expand computer coding opportunities with our external partners. So there are a number of different, different industry opportunities that exist within this county, and we really want to explore and create opportunities for people in need. Now, some of the current county activities that we have, we have our ACES program, that's the Apprenticeship to Career Empowerment Program, and absolutely genius program. We have our county ordinance that, that really supports apprentice participation in our county construction projects. We have the county internship program, the tuition reimbursement program, and a proposed employee certification program as well to help enhance our current employees. Next slide, please. Now, recommendation number four is to conduct a disproportionate minority impact study on criminal justice. And we'll continue our efforts with the Public Safety Coordinating Council and the Circuit 13 Juvenile Justice Circuit Advisory Board, along with our collaborative community engagement partners. We currently have our criminal justice zone in places where we have our Public Safety Coordinating Council. We have the Safe and Sound Evening Reporting Center. We also have our Children's Services Assessment Center and the Hillsborough County Civil Citation Program. And you know, within our Sheriff's Department, he has been just extremely creative in many of the programs that he's offering to prevent recidivism. He also oversees the Child Protective Services Investigation. We just want to create stronger opportunities and stronger relationships so that we can better serve our citizens in need. And our next slide, please. Recommendation number five is to provide ongoing and comprehensive DEI training to all staff. And I just want to emphasize that first, first and foremost, these trainings are voluntary. The, the Human Resources Department has taken off running, creating many, many training opportunities and activities. If you have missed, you know, any of the monthly cultural awareness activities, I just want to say they're doing a tremendous job in that area. They're creating fun opportunities for us to get to know and learn about different cultures and learn our coworkers, you know, and our counterparts and our colleagues and the people that we serve just a little bit better. You know, and the idea is that if we know each other better, we can serve each other better as well. And so I just want to take a moment to, to really kind of identify the current training classes that we have. We have diversity, respect, and inclusion in the workplace, understanding unconscious bias to unleash potential, leading across generations, DEI in the workplace, and we also have some specialized training. Next slide, please. Now, our recommendation number six is to support enhancement in the public transportation system. Now, we'll continue investing in transportation improvements with an emphasis on equity, using an equity decision guide with a desire to improve infrastructure and to build economic opportunities for disadvantaged persons and communities. It's my commitment to continue to work closely with hard as they navigate through the process and the challenge of meeting the demands for much-needed public transit service, services. Our current existing services include the Sunshine Line. But before, you know, before I really start listing off these services, I do want to say that, you know, in working with Administrator Wise and many of my colleagues across the Board, and in, in trying to make decisions on how to best utilize the American Rescue Plan dollars and even the CARES dollars, that there was really a lens on equity and how these dollars were spent. A tremendous amount of allocation of the, for the road projects went into low and moderate income communities. You know, there's been a set aside allocation of almost $27 million of the ARP funds for affordable housing units and, and services. And so that is a, that's just tremendous progress. That's a tremendous effort on the part of County Administrator and the Board of County Commissioners. We also have several, several different county activities that have, that have existed for quite some time. The Sunshine Line Services, it provides medical transportation, door-to-door transportation for qualified people. We, we've provided support for the Heart New Maintenance Facility, the Public Works Maintenance Activities that's being done in the low to moderate income communities. And, you know, we go out and we have our community forums and we participate in many of the commissioner forums and meetings in the evening, and we get direct feedback from those communities about some of those existing needs, and we're very, very responsive to those needs. Also, you know, there's the referendum of transportation that's going to be on the November ballot. And, and last but not least, we can't forget the ferry services being offered to Hillsborough, from Hillsborough to Pinellas and back. And, you know, it lands in downtown in St. Petersburg, and I want to say I love downtown Tampa, but I also love downtown St. Petersburg. It's a real, it's a real treat. And the ferry service from South County to McBeal Air Force Base are very much needed service. Next slide, please. Now, recommendation number seven is to enforce the regular use of an equity decision guide. And so I want to say that I've used that terminology a few times while giving this presentation. Now, the Equity Decision Guide is a set of principles that help us to create more informed decisions. This guide will be utilized to help raise our level of consciousness as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion in everyday opportunities, not just on big choices, but how we respond and react to everyday opportunities to be more inclusive, to be more diverse, and to really be, be more conscious about the impact of our decisions. Now, the plan is to execute an administrative directive requiring utilization of an equity decision guide to be referenced when making relevant decisions. And when we think about relevant decisions, they're throughout the day, throughout the day for all of us. And we have a number of efforts already underway. We have our public meetings for capital projects, the priority of affordable housing in the neighborhood revitalization strategy areas. We have a small developer cohort that's being led by Affordable Housing Services. And we also are very conscious and aware when developing and designing the budget process and the impact on low to moderate income communities and communities of color. And so, you know, all of these services, you know, including our human services programs, which, which consist of aging, children, healthcare, social services, and homeless services are critical to providing the necessary support for people to be able to move from, from a place of dependency to, to a self-sustaining position. And, and really, diversity and inclusion will help people to be able to move from one point to another. And finally, I just want to say that, you know, when, when you're in a position to help to create and implement policies, you're always thinking about things that are good for all. But we didn't really get here because of policies that were good for all. And so, you know, many of the recommendations and the services that are outlined are designed for race-conscious solutions. It's impossible for us to create race-conscious solutions without talking about race. So as we move along in our efforts to create diversity, equity, and inclusion, the topic of race will sometimes come up, and it would be central in some of our efforts as we move ahead. And I want to say I thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to the opportunity and the challenge of building bridges in helping Hillsborough County be a more inclusive community. Thank you, and that is my presentation.
Cheryl, thank you so very much. I am not only so excited to see you taking a lead on this because a lot of the work that you and I have been doing over the many years, you know, has been sort of leading towards this, and we've been doing it in other ways, but I really like the idea of a concerted effort and, and having the, some of the structure explained to us so that we understand not only who's on first, but who's actually part of what their goal will be is to be part of that process. And I think that's, that's enormously helpful. Thank you, Ms. Wise, as well, for being able to bring that forward because I think it's helpful for the Board to really see how we're reorganizing in such a way that this lens can be created in everything that we do. With that, I'm going to ask the Board members to offer some guidance. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, Ms. Howell, congratulations on your new position. I know all of us are really looking forward to working with you even, even more than we already do on your expanded responsibilities. And I, I just wanted to, I really loved your presentation. I particularly love that you mentioned the transportation referendum because, you know, this Board, I think, sees very clearly that without a major investment in our infrastructure, we are just going to be very hamstrung when it comes to really improving people's quality of life. The, the cost of gas and the length of people's commutes in this environment combined really make for a very, very onerous circumstance. It particularly hits people in lower incomes harder. And I, you know, I really look forward to being out, working to get this done so that we can make a meaningful difference for people. What we are talking about doing in this county will make a meaningful difference, whether it is transit or, or in terms of road, sidewalk, intersection, and crosswalk improvements. And it can't start soon enough, and the fact that it will be viewed through an equitable lens is only going to strengthen the work when we're, we're done doing it. So I just wanted to put my two cents in on, on that. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
I will also recognize Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. And yes, congratulations, Ms. Howell, as you take on these new responsibilities in this new position. I'm very, very excited and pleased with Administrator Wise's wise choice and pleased that you're willing to step up to this position. I think it's, it's just perfect with your experience in, that you can bring to bear on this, and I look forward to working with you on this. I just think you're perfect for this in so many ways, in so many levels with all your combination of talents that you can bring to this position. I just want to say a couple of things that occur to me as we're kind of, you know, and first and foremost, we, our administration has been, you, Ms. Howell, have been working on equity and inclusion and diversity. This Board is very mindful of that in general, and, and we've been doing a lot of good work. I just feel like now we're opening a new chapter where we will, you know, begin doing the things in new ways with a harder eye, and, and so I think that's very exciting. And, and so I think that's very exciting. One of the things that I'd, I'd like to mention, and I don't, I don't need any feedback, but I just want to put it out there for, for now is, and I, I mentioned this to our county administrator recently, is, you know, I had a conversation with a certain Saturday morning men's breakfast group you all may be familiar with. And, and they were asking me about equity and diversity, I should say diversity, within the county. And I said, well, it's interesting you mention that because I had just recently myself gone to our county's website of our management positions and been struck by the lack of diversity there. And so I, you know, I've discussed this with Bonnie Wise. And I think, you know, I see this is in HR, something that we have been looking at and something that we will be doubling down on. And I'd just like to raise it as an issue that I think we need to walk the walk in our own county government of make, ensuring that our county government, from the top to the bottom, reflects the community in proportion to the, you know, the, the diversity in our community throughout the ranks. And I think at the same time, it would be very helpful to look at the, make sure that we're paying everybody, equal pay for equal work with some kind of a, an audit. You know, it, it has been all my life that women are making less than men, but certainly African-American women are making less than men in general. And, and I, we just need to be very careful about that. And I just want to put that out there as a, as a, you know, a goalpost, a signpost of something to be working on as we, as we create this office and, and double down those efforts. The other thing that I would like to mention is, you know, we have been looking at institutional racism and institutional equity. The MPO had a very good equity study done about how our infrastructure reflects some of the racism and discrimination in our history. And so we are now, you know, beginning to address some of that. And I'm very proud. I've already been bragging in the community about how we are doing, as, as Ms. Howell mentioned, spending infrastructure dollars on road improvements and sidewalk improvements with prioritizing disadvantaged, underserved areas to make sure that we begin catching up to some of the discrimination in the past. And I would like to just take this opportunity to mention to the board and the administration that, you know, we have a, an item coming up on our next board agenda about providing new septic sewer, new sewer and water service to an area that hasn't even been built yet, that is proposed for luxury homes in a golf course. And meanwhile, we have underserved communities that have been waiting in line for a very long time, from Gibsonton to Wy Mama, Palm River has been waiting. University Area has been waiting. And we had, you know, these, some of these Palm River and University Area are in that area that the city is supposed to be taking care of, but they haven't. And I'm just want to ask you all to start thinking about whether or not we should be looking at an ILA that is on our next board member, board agenda that would have our county take over a piece of the city, one piece of the city for a luxury development before we figure out who's going to provide water and septic to Palm River and the University Area and Wy Mama and other areas, even Carrollwood and Brandon, that have been waiting patiently for their turn. And how long we want to ask those people to wait while we hurry up and serve some brand-new development. So that, so that's something I've been thinking of while we're talking about looking at things through an equity lens. And I'd like us all to think about. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I, I tend to see those things too, so I appreciate you pointing that out. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized. We can't hear you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. But Commissioner Kemp had her hand up before mine, so I want to be respectful. Is it okay?
Sure, but usually it shows me in the right order, but feel free to, to wait your turn if that's the case. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Commissioner Myers, you can go ahead if you like. I didn't, I didn't even, even notice what hands up, honestly.
All righty, I want to be respectful to my, my fellow board members.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
First, let me thank Ms. Howell. As the young folks will say, you came out the box like you're already in the position and ready to rumble and roll. And I thank you for your overview of talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion in the nine, the seven pillars that was mentioned in the report. It is wonderful that you're stepping up in this leadership as a former county employee. It's been a long time since we have had a woman in the role as Assistant County Administrator. And the wealth of knowledge that you are going to bring to this position, in addition to your affordable housing, is a testament of how you have served the county for many years that you've been here. I also would like to thank Ms. Wise, Ms. Bonnie Wise, for making sure that this board received this workshop today and have this workshop to talk about an issue that is, that we've been talking about for the past 30 years here in the county when it comes to diversity, inclusion, and equity. We just keep changing the name, but the story still remain the same, that we do have some issues here in Hillsborough County. And I had the opportunity also to look at our leadership team here in the county. It has not changed as much when I was an employee here. I'm still an employee, but in a different role. Not as an commission, I want to be clear. But as an employee, we always look at the top and the diversity is not there. And one of the things that I'm about, our county administrator, she stepped up to the plate last June when we were doing her evaluation to mention and included in her evaluation, she wanted to do more with diversity. Most people shy away from that. They don't want to deal with that issue because it comes racism. But our county administrator said, I'm going to tackle it on. And we can look at today of what she's bringing and trying to make our county so much better. And I applaud you, Bonnie, for stepping in that direction a year ago and having the vision for Hillsborough County to lead us and to make sure that the diversity and equity and inclusion is a part of all of us, not just a few people here in Hillsborough County. But when it comes to the Black and Brown community or the African-American community, we stand ready to step up in a leadership role. And we can look at the various departments even today. Do we have, in the directors that are listening right now, do you have that diversity, equity, inclusion within your department? If we're going to make changes here in Hillsborough County, it starts with us, it starts with our, our leadership. And we have an administrator who going to make sure it happens. And, and that's the good part about, about this. And then the other thing, as we're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, we as a board, we must also look at in the same light when we're making board appointments. We cannot continue the same path we've been doing alone when it comes to certain boards. We don't want to appoint anyone African-American or Black and Brown because we've already made the promises. Okay, let's give everyone the opportunity to serve particular, when they submitting the application to us and saying, I want to serve on this board. And that's what, and what makes diversity, equity, inclusion very strongly because we're not denying those the opportunity who wants to serve in our county, a serve on one of our various boards. And I'm not going to name any boards, but we have a lot of boards. And hopefully one day we're going to narrow down some of the boards. But we'll address that issue at a later date. And lastly, I want to express and thank you, Commissioner Smith, for bringing up the wastewater septic tank. Because when I joined the county in 1988 as an employee, in 2020, I joined as a commissioner, so let's not get it confused, okay? We were talking about septic sewer for the Palm River area. 30 years later, we're still talking about the same issue. I cannot see someone coming ahead of those who've been in line, waiting for the longest to address these same issues we've been talking about. We're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion. Let's not continue to overlook the underserved community because they've been waiting. And I've been talking with budgeting management and said, hey, guys, I'm not going to approve anything. We're going to take care of Palm River because they've been waiting the longest that I know. So I'm going to stop there. I might come back with some other comments. But again, Cheryl Howell, as the young people say, you rock. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll recognize Commissioner Kemp. Thank you, Commissioner Myers. That was awesome.
Thank you. Great, great remarks by everyone. I'll just tag on a little bit to the Palm River and just say that when I was an aide to Commissioner Kathy Castor, when she was a commissioner back in 2003, 2006, Palm River was also a big topic of discussion then in terms of sewer and wastewater, water wastewater. And I think some of that was, was done, but it's, it's been on the table for a long time. So I also can appreciate that and look at that because there's so much need in terms of that throughout the county and in the urban, shockingly, in the urban service area and very dense areas. And I, I didn't really realize the scope of it until the last few years in terms of the entire urban service area. And I appreciate that the, that there has actually been, with Ms. Wise, a lot of focus on working within those communities. And I'd like to just keep that moving because I think it's an excellent direction that we have been going in. I'd like to make sure we, we keep moving in that direction because I do think it is very much something to look at when we're looking at our, our county with an equity lens. I'll also say congratulations to Cheryl Howell. And, and I feel very, I'm, I think it's wonderful that we have not only Ms. Howell as a new Assistant County Administrator, but there is a few places that have started to get equity officers, directors, managers. I think I was reading online, I think maybe Orange County and Broward County. But I was really, wanted to make sure that when we had our equity officer, if we, if we did such a thing and had such a position, that they were elevated to a status that would be kind of overarching. And I feel like this is what Ms. Wise designed when she did this, when she came up with this plan. And I think it's an excellent plan because I appreciate elevating that kind of priority within our management structure that way. And I think it's, it's really important. So again, congratulations. I'll add on to everyone else to Ms. Howell, but also to Ms. Wise, I think, for, I think the plan, as was said, is a wise one. And so I think that's really, really good. I'd also like to, I really, the presentation I thought was really concise and excellent and strong and hit in a lot of areas in a lot of good ways. I appreciate the highlighting of transit, which I think is one of the, to me, has always been one of the ways, besides affordable housing, that we can provide people, what we, the most we can do to lift up people and get them to the places where they need to be, in the community, jobs, to healthcare, to everything else. It's one of the really important things that we need to provide, looking through things, one of the many, when we look through things with an equity lens. I'd also just like to bring a point that I've been considering. And I know some of you are aware that we've involved, engaged Group Urban Three, it's a consulting group, in the Wy Mama area to look at the challenges there. Because I, if we were any other county, all these places would be incorporated places, Ruskin, Wy Mama. And they would have their own Brandon, Lutz, I mean, every other place. We have nothing, Hillsborough County is unique and practically the nation for having, what I call the unincorporated, the city of unincorporated Hillsborough County, a million people. But there, they don't have their own government, which we get to hear from and set priorities and, and, and work on, on their issues. And I thought it was really important that Urban Three was in there consulting and trying to look at how, as Wy Mama grows and as opportunities move that way, that we both, for those that live there now, that they're not pushed out, it's not totally gentrified and that it provides benefits, not just move over. We're putting in single-family suburbs here and you're going away. And I, I, this is where, one of the places where my heart lies in seeing that, that Wy Mama kind of has an opportunity to get the, the opportunities that this, that this, the changes in their community will bring. One of the things that Urban Three does and one of the reasons I was very, wanted very much to have them here in Hillsborough County is that I'd been watching for some time some of their value per an acre analysis that they have done in other places, in other counties, Gwinnett County, Georgia, Lafayette, Louisiana, Sarasota, and throughout the country, actually. And it was one of the things that I, I felt like I learned so much from. In fact, that's the first time I really understood water and wastewater systems and that we're not seeing them, but they're underground like our road infrastructure. And it's costing us a lot of money when we extend it out for far distances. And so I, you know, it was, they do an analysis that shows us where are the things that bring us wealth? Where are the, the, it, it's very surprising sometimes where you see the most value-added kinds of things, whether it be small, single-family homes in terms of the tax base that that brings as opposed to some big, big-box parking lot. And it's very interesting to see what they come up with, but it also, I think, should guide, it could be a great guide for our decisions about public investment and economic development and everything else. And so I just wanted to bring forward because I would very much like to see Urban Three. I have not seen anybody actually that does a value per an acre analysis like they do. I think some people are starting to learn from what they do and do that now. But I, I think they're pretty much the original creators of, of that. But I'd really like to see that kind of analysis done over the entire county and thinking about an equity lens and thinking about how we move forward in the future. Because I see that as setting a table and really understanding what the map has now and getting guidance and thinking through how we should move in a direction with that. So I just wanted to raise that this time and ask the staff about looking at that as part of how we move forward through this equity lens and equity oversight in the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I, I just, I'm very excited to see that we are moving this project forward. It's June of 2020, seemed like a year, two, ten years ago right now with all that's happened. And we, we did get waylaid a little, you know, by, by kind of a big deal. But I, I do want to say that we learned a lot about our equity efforts and our lens in looking at how our community grows and cares for itself and what the impacts are when we choose or whether it's on purpose or not. and what the impacts are when we choose, or whether it's on purpose or not, where we don't recognize where there are parts of our, of our community that, that need some TLC because of a set of circumstances that may have been in place for decades. The areas that I'm, you know, very excited about seeing are areas in one, for the first recommendation and the fourth, if I'm not mistaken, yep, the fourth recommendation. But what I really enjoy is the reorganization of, of efforts that fall within the equity and, and community impact area that, that Cheryl will, will carry. Bringing together the Office of Community Affairs, Equity, Equal Opportunity, Diversity Advisory Council's efforts in elevating that and really making sure that those voices of those citizens that can give us good guidance on how we see ourselves and how we deliver services and how we partner with our community partners on issues and areas that are of concern is, is hugely important. The Commissioner's Status of Women, I know I've met with them more recently and, and helped identify areas that they wish, in their efforts, that, that impact women's and women's opportunity and leadership and challenges of life, have been focusing on. And obviously with the great work that is now, oftentimes with, with Commissioner Myers' leadership, that we've been looking at, along with all the staff that have focused on the minority and business, small business programs, is great to see. And including things like what we've done with Career Source and the ACES program, even with the Future Career Academy that focuses on high school students in minority schools to make sure that they have the vision of what's possible to lead whole, happy, and healthy, and financially secure lives. Because they have the understanding of what's possible in communities that they may live in that have been maybe under-invested in the past. And then obviously, the, the human, you're looking at human resources and how we hire and who we hire and, and what opportunities we make sure that we have within our workforce are recognized and, and address the biases we all have. I mean, everybody has them. I mean, just everybody has them. No, there's not anybody that doesn't have them. That's human behavior. But we also need to recognize how we can learn from them and making sure that we are kind to each other all the way along the way. The, the areas that I'm really excited about are in, on Recommendation Four. Because I sit on the Public Safety Coordinating Council. Much of what we observe there is the impact of not recognizing trauma in a community. Oftentimes, it comes from a variety of different sources of some, of which we have no control. But recognizing that those communities have an opportunity to experience a difficulty and then still be successful is important. How we spend tax dollars, you know, throughout our services in order to create a decent safety net or a safety net that is effective matters to communities. And so the programs that we offer and how we partner with our community is critically important to be able to build strong, vibrant, resilient communities where the families and the businesses thrive from an equitable perspective. So I'm thrilled to see those, those opportunities to partner on those efforts, whether it be in the area of, you know, healthcare, whether it be in the area of childcare, whether it be in the area of economic opportunity, whether that be in the protections for our tenants, such as we've done in the past with the tenant bill of rights to assure that, that renters have enough understanding and rights to be able to protect themselves in what can be an unequal situation. So I'm proud of the work that we've done so far. And I'm really looking forward to the work we will do going forward. The only piece that I would like to say that I, I don't see in here that was mentioned in Mr. Brown's presentation was our need to address how we engage with our community when we're investing in that community or looking to invest in that community and in terms of engagement. We have, you know, we have Neighborhood Empowerment. We've got a couple of different names of the ways we have approached this. But, you know, when, when the county provides programs, we have oftentimes, even though we've done a one-time, here's what we're doing and this is a great program and you might want to take advantage of it. And then we do put it in newsletters. But frequently, there's, it's important to engage within a community. So I, I know that one of the most effective ways to help our residents benefit from the resources that we invest to help a community grow, thrive, and become resilient is by going where they are, meeting people where they are. And, and that was mentioned in the initial report. And it will probably flush itself out in the recommendations that we have heard today. But I do believe that it's going to be very important for us to do that. And then also have measurements to see how we are succeeding. For example, you know, knowing how, how we are able to address the social services needs that we do fund every year and making sure that we're adequately prepared for addressing that when things happen. We were very, very fortunate to have the CARES dollars and the American Rescue Plan dollars to get us through this pandemic. But when those dollars are exhausted, which they will be in 2023, there will still be parts of our economies and parts of our communities that will have experienced long-lasting impacts from those things. Having a measuring stick to be able to identify how we are dressed and how we're best prepared for addressing those needs will help stabilize the community when it goes through tough times. And we're talking about recessions, we're talking about inflation, we're talking about food costs and supply interruptions. This will, this effort will actually help us be best prepared for things like that when they come forward. And so I am very much looking forward to your leadership, Ms. Howell. And I want to thank Ms. Wise for really looking at how she's sort of reorganizing the way we deliver services, especially to those communities that may have not known in the past how to connect to those resources that we invest in, but also giving us the tools to be able to see when there may be some inequities in some of the policies that we are adopting or projects we're funding. Because oftentimes, our value systems are based on where we, you know, how we spend our money. They say, you know, you, you value what you put your money into or your, 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 what is it? I can't remember what the term is. What you, what you invest in or how you spend your money is a representation of your values. Where your money, where your mouth is. And so the good news is I think we're going to be right in line and align a lot of those projects along the way. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Possibly we do have the consultant on the line that, that is available to answer any questions that may come from the board or, or even from staff to, to, that relate to the actual initial study.
Madam Chair, if I could just mention one thing and to put Commissioner Smith's mind at ease, that particular agenda item is not going to be coming before us just yet. That was inadvertently rolled over from the last meeting. So we're not quite ready for that one yet. So I just wanted to put your mind at ease on that. Having said that, I appreciate your comments and everyone's comments. And I, I hear you regarding the matter in total, but did want to let you know about that. And just generally to all the board members, I want to thank you and for your, for your comments. This is something we are all going to be doing together. And I appreciate your leadership. I appreciate your encouragement and your insights. And, and we're all working with Cheryl and with the community to move this all forward. This is, these were the seven recommendations that were in the consultant's report. It's not all-inclusive. There's a lot more. And as we get into it, there will be a lot more to come. So I just wanted to assure you that we'll be looking forward to it as well.
That's great. I don't see any other comments or hands raised. And so with that, I'm looking forward to the community that's watching this, whether they're watching it live or watching it on YouTube. We'll make sure that it's posted on our website for further review. It's an exciting day and congratulations, Ms. Howell. I'm freaking out a little bit on the affordable housing side, but I, I'm sure we'll be able to find a, you know, someone that can help you with managing that too. But, because that's part of our overall, you know, community engagement process in terms of our investing in our communities for housing. So I, I appreciate that, but thank you so much for all that you do and congratulations.
Thank you.
And I, with that, I will call this workshop adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here.